I know. It's seldom used. But come to order. Welcome back to the Upland City Council meeting for Monday, September 22nd here at Council Chambers. At this time. Can you guys hear me in the back? Are we having the same problem as last time? In the back, can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Use my radio voice. Here we go. Okay. So, we're gonna go right now to our invocation. Pastor Summer Brown, are you here? Hello Pastor. And that'll be followed up with Pledge of Allegiance by Ted Powell. Please rise. If you're wearing your hat, please remove your hats.
Bow with me. Gracious heavenly Father, we are so grateful that you are this big Creator of all things, strong enough to bear our burdens and yet so near to us that you know the number of hairs on our head. I thank you that you are a compassionate God who says, "Come to me, all who are weary and burdened, and I will give you rest." And Lord, today, I pray for our beautiful city of Upland and her residents. Would you bless and keep each of them? Each of her residents and their families. Make your face shine upon them. We pray for these who are charged with the great responsibility of making the decisions for these residents. I pray for wisdom and guidance for each of them. I pray for unity among them. And I pray that you would bless and guide their endeavors. I pray for the public servants of this city who give of themselves daily and sacrificially. I pray for your continued protection over them, for clarity of thought and wisdom when the pressure is on. Lord, we thank you for being a God who deeply loves and cares about us and this city of Upland. And I ask for your blessing here. In the name of Jesus, we ask. Amen.
Ted? You're up.
Please join me in the pledge to the allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Summer and also thank you Ted. Madam Clerk, presentation.
We have one presentation this evening and that is the presentation of the Key to the City to Ralph Cavalo honoring a legacy of service.
Okay. This is probably gonna be rough for a lot of us. Okay? So, I want to welcome the audience, first of all, to this historic and special moment. For tonight, for the very first time, the city of Upland will present the Key to the City. We consider it our highest community honor. The Key to the City is a symbol of trust and gratitude. It is reserved for those whose service and leadership have left a permanent mark on Upland. Let me tell you about the criteria. The recipient would have to have at least three of these. Numerous contributions to the community, check. Dedication to public service, check. Positive impact through leadership and volunteerism, check. Years of sustained civic involvement, check. Serving as a role model embodies Upland's mission and vision, check. How Ralph meets those standards. Well Ralph, I'd ask you to go to the podium but I want you to sit there because this is gonna be awhile. So, there's a list here, separate of what I'm... I want to read some of these. These are Ralph Cavalo's contributions and volunteerism. Upland Veterans Monument, project manager, led the construction at City Hall and the library site. Upland Veterans Plaza. Lettering installed over the archways at City Hall. Upland Library Projects. The Horst Children's Reading Room. Friends of the Library Bookstore. Downtown Upland Gazebo. And this was interesting because when I reached out to Ralph about it, because I figured if I reached out to anybody else, I'd probably get a kick in the fanny. Not only did Ralph step up, but Mark Davidson stepped up along with Mustafa. But Ralph really took the lead. And I'd find him days out there just leaning against the railing looking. He was coming up with ideas how he could make it better. Greenbelt Park North Field. Bob Hargus Major Field. Installed artificial turf, enlarged batting cage, installed spring turf, installed new scoreboard, built the batting cage, removed the snack bar, installed new bleacher seats. Upland Memorial Park. Renovated the Rotary Field. Built snack bar equipment locker room and scoreboard at Rudy Munoz Field. Enlarged the South Field from 300 to 325 depth. Remove and replaced the 40-year-old basketball court and the underlying 1960's roller rink with a new NBA full-length lighted court and two additional full-length lighted courts. Renovated the South Field with new infield grass. At the Gar Wardens Field, installed scoreboard, built batting cage, built snack bar and boardroom, oversaw removal of building at 8th and Campus. Renovated field and installed new bleacher seats. His community projects, Upland High School, Vietnam Memorial, oversaw the rebuilding. Southwest Property 4.3 acres renovated entire property, installed artificial turf and created new varsity baseball and girls' flag football field. The YMCA. Lauren K. Sanchez Early Development Child Center renovated 12,000 square foot facility with new concrete, artificial turf, painted the entire building and wood patio. Indoor soccer field renovated with a new artificial turf. St. Mark's Episcopal Chapel oversaw improvement to the building on 18th Street. Rerooft the main building and detached garage. Upgraded restroom to ADA standards and refinished 26 pews and over 100 altar chairs. Cooper Museum and patio renovations, 1,600 square foot white oak patio covered with lighting heaters and fans. Youth sports and mentorship. Upland National Little League, 1979 to 2014, 35 years of service. 14 terms as president. Roles as coach, board member over multiple decades. ASO Region 32, 1979 to 1985 soccer coach. Upland Hilltoppers Girl softball, 1975-1980 player agent. Boards, clubs and community involvement. Upland Community Foundation, Upland Library Board, Friends of the Upland Library, Rotary Club of Upland and the Upland Kiwanis Club. Is that a lifetime of achievements or what? Ralph's also been a resident since 1971. And that's over 50 years of active service in our community. It's incredible, if you think about it. This time, I'd like to invite some of the council members to speak. Ralph, Rudy? Mayor Pro Tem Rudy Zuniga.
Ralph, it looks like you're either having an interview or getting ready for a roast. I promise, we're not gonna do either one.
Oh, that would've been great.
We're not doing either one. I really treasure your friendship. You and I became really good friends over the last six years, six and a half years. You've done a lot for this city and every time you've done something for our city, it's like you have the residents and the city in your... The best for our city and residents in mind. You do everything that you can for our residents and our city, not for yourself. It's like you've... Everything you've done, you've touched residents from all over our city. People that live in Upland will enjoy things that you've built and not even realize it. You've done so much for our community and I'm lucky and my residents are lucky in District 4 that you spent a lot of time in District 4. And I'm honored to have spent time with you out there driving the tractor for Southfield and moving dirt and you tell me, "Move the dirt here, put it back, move it here, put it back." I didn't even know how to drive a tractor till that day. But I figured it out. Taking my family to visit you while the basketball courts were going up and seeing how the things were coming along. I thank you for everything you've done and there's not enough words that I can say to show my appreciation, but thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. And I'm glad I know you and I'm looking forward to many, many more projects that you can come up with, okay? We got the money, so let's do some more work.
Next, we have... Yes.
Only for you Ralph.
Next, we have Councilmember James Brightley.
Ralph, I wrote down my thoughts I wanted to share with you, but I just want you to know that to this day, you still hold our phone call conversation that lasted almost three hours, it was two hours and 58 minutes. I was looking at the clock going, "Is it gonna make it to three?" And then you hung up on me, I was like, "Okay, we did this close." But, you know, your story is woven in the fabric of our community for more than four decades. You've given of yourself, your time, your resources, your vision to make Upland a better place. You've built not only structures and fields, but opportunities. You've treated, you've created spaces where children learn, teamwork, families make memories, and our entire community comes together. We see your legacy in so many corners of Upland. We see it in the baseball diamonds you fought to improve or completely rebuild, where generations of children learned not just how to play a game, but how to grow in confidence and character. We see it in the children's reading room and the Friends of the Library bookstore, where children discover a love of reading and families gather together to learn. We see it at the Veterans Monument and Plaza where our community pauses to honor the men and women who gave their all for our country. These are not just projects, they are living testaments to your belief that Upland could always be better, stronger and more united. What is remarkable, Ralph, is that not just what you built, but you're a man that doesn't understand the meaning of the word "no." You see the word "no" as an obstacle. You never see the word "no" as an obstacle. You see the word, you hear the word "no" and it turns into a "yes" somehow in the processing. And you always do, you always turn that "no" into a "yes." And I've always been impressed by that. It's quite a remarkable feat that you do there. The part that I feel that we don't always see, we see a building, but your impact is greater than just the building or the field. You've inspired others. You show us that leadership is not about holding an office, but about stepping up, rolling up your sleeves and leading by example. You've shown us that service is not about recognition, it's about responsibility, about seeing the need and having the courage to meet it. Generations of children in Upland have been shaped by your work. They may not all know your name, but they know the fields they've played on, the books they've read and the community pride they felt were all made possible because of you. Tonight, as we place the key of the city in your hands, we are not just honoring the projects you built, but the values you've lived. We are saying to our city and to future generations, "Here's an example worth following. Here's what it looks like to dedicate your life to service. Here's what it means to lead with vision, perseverance and love for your community." And Ralph, I am proud to call you my friend. Thank you for everything you've done.
Councilmember Garcia.
Ralph, although I don't have as many funny stories as a lot of these guys who have known you for longer than I have, the last five years that I got into knowing you, you made a huge impact. Not only is it obvious within the community, but the thing that stood out for me and your legacy that will live on is also the love and support that you have for kids and our veterans. I've seen you fight very hard for the library programs, the building, the community centers, everything related to kids that are our future and our leaders. And you've set a great example of what to do in our community, how to grow it and how to really be just a tight-knit community. And for that, it's a legacy that will live on forever. So, I thank you and I'm very honored, Matt, to be here and saying a few words for you too. Thank you.
Councilmember Mouse.
Okay, dear Ralph, it's an honor to be a part of this ceremony and to know you. Knowing I would speak last, what possibly could I add that hasn't already been said? So, I will start when I first met you as the grand marshal in our hometown Christmas parade. Never gave thought to your paths, our paths crossing again until I arrived at City Council. Quickly learning the rap sheet of "The Ralph Cavalo," over time, I enjoyed our calls, some that you gave me simply for encouragement and some were to tell me what is the next item of business. One thought that stands prominent is how city staff and council members change, but your dedication over the decades stayed consistent. This is no easy feat to accomplish projects in a city, let alone with turnover. This verse comes to mind on your leadership as a pillar in our community. "Let us not become weary in doing good, for at the proper time we will reap a harvest if we do not give up." Galatians 6:9. You have a unique talent of rallying the community to fund and complete projects, projects that span every corner of all 15 miles. And if I may call up Sweet Noreen, she knows that she's gonna come up and stand by Ralph's side.
We can get a chair.
She knows she's gonna stand for like maybe two minutes, I have two minutes or less. And Sweet Noreen, "A man is only as good as the woman standing next to him." Thank you for your support and your steadfast kindness. Ralph, you have created a legacy and one that all of us in this... Once all of us in this room are gone, it will live on for the greater good of community. While we grant you the key, it is most certainly you who helped build the door. Thank you so much.
I don't have much more to say, Ralph. I don't want you to start crying if I start speaking about you. You did wear a tie like I told you. Combed your hair. I called you. I called you, remember? I said, "Hey." That's right. Shaved? It was good, I know. Well, it is after the 20th. So Ralph, on behalf of the City Council and the people of Upland, I'm honored to present you, Mr. Ralph Cavalo, with the first key to the city of Upland. Counsel? Where's Claudia?
So, Ralph, I'm gonna let you share a few words. We know you don't have a lot to say other than when you want to get something built. Then you make sure we all hear you. So, go ahead, share a few words. I wanted to also let you know, actually first, I want to be able to bring a couple more people up. I want to bring members from Eloise Gomez Reyes's office, Senator Eloise Gomez Reyes's office, and also from Michelle Rodriguez Assemblymember Rodriguez. Why don't you, if you want, go over there, you want to use the microphone? Okay? A lot of people know about Ralph.
A lot of people in the communities know about Ralph. Even other cities know about Ralph. And most of our leader's at a different level, a higher rung on the ladder than we are, this council. So, we've got some people here to recognize Ralph also.
Hello everyone. Thank you Mayor, City Council, community members and family members. I'm here on behalf of Senator Gomez Reyes to honor you and also come here on a historical day. Of course, thank you for all you do. I'm here to present a certificate of recognition for your work that reads, "On behalf of the California State Senate, I commend you for receiving the first ever key to the city of Upland. Thank you for bringing residents together to honor veterans and enhancing public spaces to supporting youth sports and community programs and for going above and beyond, embodying Upland's mission and vision. I hereby extend best wishes of continued success in your efforts to serve and uplift the community." And I couldn't help but think about when the mayor was reading off the list of all the people you've touched and will continue to touch. Thank you so much for all you do.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sophia Cohen. I'm a field representative for Assemblymember Michelle Rodriguez. And on behalf of the Assemblymember, I'm very honored to present you with the certificate of recognition. On behalf of the 53rd State Assembly District, I am honored to recognize Ralph Cavalo as the recipient of the city of Upland's first ever key to the city. For more than five decades, his leadership, service and dedication have shaped Upland through lasting civic projects and community improvements. This historic honor is a fitting tribute to his extraordinary legacy and enduring impact on the city of Upland.
Okay, we're gonna all be seated, we're gonna go back to the dais and we're gonna let Ralph speak for a few minutes, give him a chance to say some things. We're all gonna get over here with Ralph. We're gonna go behind Ralph, okay?
I'd love to tell the story about the basketball courts because I was not... I would only go replacing two boards until you got involved.
Ralph, lift your feet up, we're gonna roll you. No, we're gonna roll him? We're gonna spin him and spin him, we're gonna keep spinning him. Do we have that picture ready?
Okay, if you pay close attention, if you look on your screen here about now, we now have a road in Upland called Ralph Cavalo Road. And you'll see the sign there, it's gonna be going up. And it is the road that goes between San Antonio, south of San Bernardino Road, north of San Bernardino Road and between the hospital. Right along the Southfield Memorial Park, so that's Ralph Cavalo Road. So, that's a place that will be able, you'll be able to take your driving lessons, high school students. And those of you that want to go leave rubber. You can do some burnouts there. In memory of Ralph, okay? All right. Ralph, we're gonna let you speak. And I'll let you know also, after Ralph gets done, we're gonna, we're probably gonna, there'll be a chance for you guys to come get photos with Ralph. There'll be plenty of time to get photos. So Ralph, you're up buddy.
Well, first of all, thank you all you people that have come to this event. I really truly appreciate it. First of all, I didn't know that Upland had this many people, but... And with that being said, I also want to thank the City Council, the mayor and the City Council, the city manager, great guy, Michael Blake. And of course, the best of all is our clerk, Carrie Johnson. That's the little lady here who runs the whole place, really. You know, I was talking to my wife about this. It's a big day, but you know what? It really humbles me. When I look at the people across this room, because I know a lot of them, what they do, money-wise and activity-wise, to all of the different projects we have in town and all of the different service organizations. And, you know, I've done some, sure, but they all do it and a lot of them never get any credit and that always bothers me. And so, to those people, you guys share this particular award, okay? You know, I'm not known for really speaking a long time, okay? I knew that would get a laugh. I mean, that's my detractor. The one, I gotta tell the one story. Rudy mentioned those basketball courts that were built actually in 1980 by Kiwanis. As it was the woman's last name. And so, I said, "Oh, I'm gonna replace two of the..." There was two old, old backboards there. I said, "I'm gonna replace two of them." And his thing was, "Well, can't you do better than that?" I said, "Well, okay, let me see." So, I raised some money and we took out the court. It cost us 10 grand to take out this, oh, it's all concrete all over the place. And the guy says, "What about what's underneath?" I said, "Dirt's underneath, what are you talking about?" The original roller derby courts in Upland were underneath that. So, now it was another 10 grand taking that thing out. And there was all... But we wound up with, just thanks to Rudy, I really give him the credit, for building these six courts. And the one thing nice about it is, I see people at all levels go there. And all they need is some tennis shoes and usually a couple of basketballs, you know, and they play. And when we have, we have, once a month, and I chaired this year, Richie's gonna take me over, Richie Stager, wherever, I don't know. There he is with his hand up. And so, we would go, we have one night meeting a month. And so, I'd come out, my wife said so many times, it's the same thing. "How could those people be playing basketball now? It's cold." I said, "You know why? Because they're running all over the damn place." I mean, you would see, see, I'm telling you as a talker. You would see 15 people show up on a regular day, okay, like a Saturday. And you wonder, "How could they play?" Well, they play five-on-five full court, 94 feet by the way, and it's 50 foot wide. And then after awhile, a guy gets tired. He goes in the stands and a guy comes out and they replace each other. They don't care what the score is, they don't care what team they're on. But one time, Noreen and I would be driving by there and there must've been 40 people on the court and another 20 in the stands. And I'll tell you, I don't mean to get emotional, it really warmed my heart. You know, I came from an area in New York, I was born in the Bronx as probably most of you know. You know, our exercise was when they played stickball, is getting out of the way of cars. Because it was a different world. And I came out here and I think all of the opportunities, and there's still opportunities here. Now that I know the city has lots of money, we'll have pickleball courts all over the damn place. Anyway, I just want to again, thank you, thank the city. I really appreciate the honor. And I thank you for bringing Claudia because this'll be in pictures, real pictures, better than the phones. And I'm saying, I can't, you know, there are people I have not seen in years, you know? And the one, there's a little girl walked up to me with her mother, who I've known for a long, long time. And they came out of Little League, but I knew when she was this big. And all of a sudden, she's like five years old, you know? When you get older, because I'm 80, and my first wife here, she's 79, okay? And we're married 60 years now, a couple weeks ago, 60 years. But I'll tell you what you really learn when you're 80. You wonder, "Would it happen in the last 20 years? How did it go by?" No, I mean, you know, you're a 20-something-year-old one day and then all of a sudden, you're 80 years old. You know, it goes by so quick. So, here's my advice to the people here. Spend time with your family, you know? Give them hugs every once in a while, surprise them, go up to them and say, "You know, I really love you." You know, especially husbands. If you do that to the wives, it means they're gonna be a lot happier. I mean, I do that every day probably, right? No, okay, don't tell the truth. No, I would say, just spend that time, because what the old story is, no one ever complained...
We also have some water and some treats from the Upland Bakery, for those who aren't aware of it, downtown. So we're gonna take a recess now, and please come up, greet Ralph, have some cookies, drink some water, and thank you all for coming for this, this important day in the city of Upland's history. So Ralph, we'll need you to be the guy making sure they do Foothill Boulevard right.
Okay, we're live.
All right, welcome back to the Upland City Council meeting. We'll move on now to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, the council convened in closed session earlier this evening to consider items 4A and 4B on the posted agenda. No reportable action was taken. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Let's move on now to the oral communications. Madam Clerk.
This is a time for any member of the public to comment on any item listed or not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the legislative body is requested to submit a speaker card to the city clerk at or prior to speaking. Public comments and questions for the purpose of hearing current matters of concern in our community in an open venue is encouraged. However, under the provisions of the Brown Act, the city council is prohibited from discussion of items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, all comments will be taken under advisement for consideration in appropriate response or discussion at a later time. Speakers are requested to keep their comments to no more than three minutes. I have two speaker cards, Garrett Molino, followed by Melinda Hutchins.
There you go, good job.
On behalf of the traffic, the truck traffic around, centered around 420 11th Avenue, South 11th Avenue, I was told by the traffic sergeant after the, after the meeting, after he gave me a call, to report it every time I find a truck parked illegally, which they're not allowed to park anywhere on any public streets. And I'm, I'm gonna scroll through the nine calls I've made so far through the police department, and I know they're very busy for the calls, but, and I really feel bad about it, but they're always non-emergency. This is just to show you. I don't mind being an active member of the community, but that's a lot to have to monitor, and also all the, all the times I have to spend my time on the phone, it's not, not fun for me. And the traffic itself is, is very annoying. Zuniga, you've been there, right, at my front door, and, and it just shakes, rattles, and rolls the house every single time one of those trucks comes by, empty or full. A lot of the trucks that come by, I've, I've counted trucks in certain days, 24-hour periods, comes out, it's about 50 to 60 trucks per day on 11th Avenue. I would like a count on there to be done on 11th Avenue sometime in the future. The last survey that was done, for the street surveys, with the 11th Street, I'm sorry, 11th Avenue was left out. I'd like to note that. Thank you for your time.
Next is Melinda Hutchins.
My name is Melinda Hutchins, this is my husband, Stephen Hutchins. I'm speaking on his behalf tonight, because he has a terrible migraine. I'm also speaking on behalf of our family and some community members who have recreational vehicles. We're here to talk about the ordinance for recreational vehicles not being parked in our driveways, and we would just like to see if there can be some sort of amendment to that ordinance. We have rallied quite a few residents, and of course, with stipulations and any advice you guys have, or anything you guys are willing to do to mitigate this issue, so that we could park our trailers in our driveways for longer than a 72-hour period, not on the street, not blocking any sidewalks or sightlines, you know, of course, well-maintained and registered and all of the things. So that's our ask tonight. I do have some letters from neighbors that I'm, would like to present on their behalf as well, they couldn't be here tonight, and I believe some of them are here tonight as well, they said they were going to try to be, I haven't met them person, they called me. I left notes at everybody's door. So, we would just really love the consideration to see if there's something we can come up with to mitigate this. Thank you.
I don't have any additional speakers.
Okay, let's move on, hearing none, we'll move on now to the... Yeah, would you leave your notes with the city clerk? Please, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protan. Okay, let's move on now to the consent calendar. I know we're gonna pull item F, is that correct? 10F, we had, correct? We're gonna pull item 10F. Anybody else want anything pulled? Hearing none, got a motion for items 10A, B, C, D, E, G, H, and I.
I'll move.
So moved by Councilmember Garcia, second by Councilmember Breitling, let's vote. All right, that passed unanimously, but item 10F, council member, would you like to say something too first? Okay, first of all, I wanted to thank Tom Campbell. Tom, I think...
I don't believe, I don't believe Tom's here.
Okay, that's pretty nice of him. That's an employee, isn't he? Tom's an employee.
Tom is an Upland High alumni, and I'm not sure if he was born here, but he's lived here most of his life, and he wanted to give back to the community, so the five, these are complete sets of ADU plans that the public can utilize. They'll have to provide a site plan, because every property's different, but for the most part, because of this recent legislation, we're required to have pre-approved plans on our website. And so, Tom had five complete sets prepared, and he's wanting to donate that to the city and give back to the city where he grew up.
That's $50,000 contribution, isn't it? That's a resident stepping...
Right. If we were to hire someone to do that, it would be somewhere around $50,000, and Tom prepared these plans himself.
So I think, I'd like something from the council, some sort of recognition at one of the council meetings coming up, I know Tom's kinda quiet about that.
I'll make sure I drag him over here.
Yeah, I think, yeah. Folks, if you're not familiar with it, Tom is, he does a lot of stuff for our city.
Yeah, he's our plan check engineer, has been here, I think, for almost 15 years.
And he built a home up in the mountains, right?
In Idlewild.
Idlewild?
Yeah.
Yeah, which is kinda unique, it's big, isn't it?
It's huge, huge for the area, probably too huge.
And he built it himself, didn't he?
Well, he was, he was the general contractor himself.
Engineered and designed it all?
For the most part, I think he, in concert with another architect...
Work with me, just agree, Bobby.
[laughing]
Supposed to just agree with me, okay? So, you know, we have people like that, that are in our city, and that work really hard, and that's what people don't hear about. And that's why it's important that, you know, Councilmember Moss reminded me today, earlier, that we should make sure that this is an item that we do pull and recognize Tom for doing this. Councilmembers, any other councilmembers want to make a comment or anything? All right? All right, so you got a motion? Moved by Mayor Protan, second by Councilmember Garcia, let's vote. So we were gonna have a public hearing tonight, but it's been postponed, so without objection, we'd like to open the public hearing, if anybody here would like to speak on that matter. If you'd like to speak on the matter, otherwise, you can save it for when we bring it back to the next council meeting on Monday, October 13th. Is there anyone who wants to speak on that? Hearing none. So with a wild objection, I'd like to make a motion that the public hearing be continued to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting, 6:00 PM on Monday, October 13th.
So moved.
So moved by the Councilmember Breitling, second by Mayor Protan, let's vote. All right. Council committee reports, anyone? Did we miss something, Bob?
No.
Okay. Council committee reports, anybody? We should be able to report out next meeting our safe yield, water, water yield. It's being, right now, being processed, which tells us the amount of water. Boy, Katie, it looks pretty good, doesn't it? Looks pretty good, so, for Upland. But Upland wasn't bad, as soon as the peer review group's done, so we'll have some information on that. Not as bad as we thought, but it's not bad for Upland. So we're gonna report on that next, not a lot to say, other than the fact that the report is being done, peer group's reviewing it, safe, it's the amount of water we're allowed to take back out of the ground, is what it's about, okay? So it's interesting that the state tells us how much water we can take, it's our water, okay? But that's okay, that's a whole nother argument for the higher rung on the ladder. So, all right, let's move on now to business items. Madam Clerk.
Item 13A is the Upland Mobility Master Plan, and that'll be presented by our Development Services Director, Robert Dahlquist.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The Upland Mobility Plan is two years into the making, and with me is Alan French, our principal engineer to my right, and to his right is Yucenia Diaz, who played a large part in getting this master plan prepared. Also, is Alex Sembran, who's with KTOI, who's a consultant, who prepared the mobility plan along with the help of staff. And so, Alex will be making a presentation on the master plan, and we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks for having me tonight, on a night when such great treats were provided. I didn't plan that. So I'm here to present on the Mobility Master Plan. I'm with KTOA, a landscape architecture and planning firm in San Diego, and we specialize in active transportation, mobility, and parks and recreation. This slide shows our project team. We've worked closely with the city, as you see here. For outreach, we partner with Catherine Padilla and Associates, and for engineering, we partner with Mark Thomas on this plan. Next slide. The presentation will follow roughly the same structure as the plan that you've reviewed. I'll go over just a quick overview of what the plan is, some of the goals and the infrastructure that we're looking at, existing conditions in your city, what we heard from your community, the recommendations themselves, and then what the city will be doing with the plan. Yes.
Do we have the why? Has that been explained, the why we're doing this first? Bob, would that be good to do, to let the public know why we have to do, why we're doing this master plant, mobility plan?
I'll go ahead and let the council, O'Rourke see the presenter, and answer that question.
Yeah, could you, could you explain why we're having to do this?
Yeah, so plans like these are required to go after grant money. We, we prepare these for communities all over the state, so that you can pursue grant to improve, grants to improve mobility, infrastructure like sidewalks, curb ramps, bike lanes, and there's even a trails component in here. And we focus on different areas in the city, like near schools for safer routes to school, and some other points of interest and important destinations, like parks, commercial areas, things like that.
Are these required sometimes by state ordinance?
Yeah.
So these are mandates?
Mm-hmm.
Best to say, so this is another, again, another state mandate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's why, I want the public to understand that, as we talk in the community, they go, okay, what are you trying to do? Project 25, or Project 20, whatever we used to hear this in the past. But these are mandates that the state puts down to us to follow. So is that fair to say?
Yes.
So, so that's what, why it creates these projects.
And this project in particular was funded by Caltrans as well, which...
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
The city was awarded a grant for.
Thank you.
All right, next slide. Next. So the high-level overview is that we are looking at improvements for any type of mobility that doesn't involve your personal car. So walking, biking, scootering, skateboarding, people in wheelchairs, looking at access to public transit, and the ways that we do this, we first have to understand the existing conditions, so we can conduct fieldwork, walking, driving, biking around your city, in order to identify areas in need of improvement. And we also look at data that's already been collected from different sources, like collision and demographic data, to identify hotspots and areas of need based on demographics. We also, throughout the project, like, like was mentioned at the top, this was over almost two years, and we met with the, this community all throughout those, all throughout the project lifespan, and heard a lot of great things. And between the existing conditions data, and some of the collision data, and what we hear from the community, we develop and prioritize recommendations. Next slide. And we are finally at the end here. We started in summer 2024, a little bit before that, actually, and we're wrapping up now with this presentation. Next slide. I'll go over some of the improvements next, so, next slide. So pedestrian infrastructure that we're talking about, that helps you move around your city when you're not in a vehicle, are things probably that you don't notice, unless they're not there. Things like curb ramps, the slope surfaces that move from sidewalk to road, crossings, marked crosswalks, especially near schools, and things like street scape and wayfinding, these are things that just make it feel more comfortable in your high, near high-speed roadways, like you have a lot of in, in Upland. So that's the sort of recommendations we look to make in a plan like this. Next slide. Bicycle infrastructure, you have a lot of good infrastructure in Upland already, but these are the types of things we look to recommend. Multi-use paths, like the Pacific Elect Trail, class-two bike lane, which is your typical bike lane, class-three bike route, which is where bikes share the road with traffic, or class-four separated bikeways, which you don't currently have in the city, but your neighbor Clermont and Rancho, neighbors Clermont and Rancho Cucamonga do have that. Next slide. In terms of transit, we look particularly at those things that make it more comfortable and easy to ride a bus, or get, or the MetroLink, particularly things like transit shelters, so that it's more comfortable while you wait for the bus, that might be something that encourages you to take the bus more, or bike parking near bus stops, so that you can have bimodal trips, where you might ride your bike to a bus stop and jump on the bus for a longer trip. Next slide. I'll go through some of the existing conditions next. Things that we look at are things like demographics, which help us identify disadvantaged areas. We had some great active... We had some great active transportation data sets done by other consultants to give us kind of a baseline to work from. And we look at transportation patterns, walking and biking volumes, commute mode share from the census, and collision histories from different sources. And we worked a lot with Omnitrans, which was a member of our technical advisory committee to get their public transit data, ridership, what the current condition of the bus stops look like, things like that. Next slide. So, the take-home from kind of the demographic and equity areas analysis is that the area of south of, south of Foothill, demographically speaking, is a, is an area of higher need. And this is something that the state looks at for future grant funding. Next slide. Sidewalk conditions is one of the elements that was collected by a different consultant, wrapped up before our plan, but we did use their data set as a baseline for identifying gaps in the sidewalk network. Next slide. We use, on the left map here, active transportation volumes. KTOA uses a third-party provider called Replica, which models volumes of bike and ped travel. And collision history shows a lot of collision hotspots south of Foothill. And one of them, I might know, was by Upland High School. Next slide. Again, here's Omnitrans data. On the left is just the fixed bus route, and I think you had three or four fixed bus routes in the city, a change during COVID for a bit, and I understand maybe coming back a little. On the right, we show access to both a fixed bus route and to a Omnitrans service called OmniRide, which is an app-based, para-transit is the term in the, in the industry. It's, it's an app-based transit service, and it really gives great coverage in the city.
Chino Hills, Upland, and Bloomington have that.
Yeah.
It's unique to us.
It is very unique, and one of the takeaways through the master plan is that it can be advertised more. We did help some individuals at outreach events download the app and learn about it more. Next slide. Community engagement. Well, so, forget the numbers here for a sec. I can tell that three of you were at outreach events, so thank you. That's very important, not every, we don't see that in every community, and it's obvious that your city is very engaged. Other than that, we had a online community survey, ran through the first part of the project. That was very informative for identifying needs and certain hotspots. We also had our outreach team at the elementary school and at different, Lemon's S5K, things like that. We had pop-ups at Earth Day, the Lemon Festival, and these were all very informative. We held some more traditional open house events as well. Those were well-attended, 30-plus people both. And one of those events, we met an individual who was on a committee at the City of Rancho Cucamonga, and that led to a presentation and a meeting with their active transportation committee. So, there's opportunity for partnership and education there. We also had a technical advisory committee with, which included individuals from the police department, fire, different schools. They all had great input along the way. The last time I presented here in this room, it was at the Public Works Committee meeting, which is part of the public outreach plan. And we also released the plan in the month of August for review, and heard a lot of great feedback and some minor changes. Next slide. Here's just some brief numbers. Looking at these, it feels about right. We talked to a lot of people, especially at outreach events, you know, people like stopping and talking when, you know, you try to talk to them about biking, walking, bus, everybody has something to say. So, I think that's, especially here, that's a take-home. Lot of good things, lots of things to learn. Some of the needs that we heard were, especially along higher-speed road, roadways, there's a need for increased pedestrian visibility. There are gaps in the sidewalk, so repairing those where, especially in the denser neighborhoods. And especially on, along the Pacific Electric Trail, we heard a lot about a perceived risk of crime. So, that's something that could be addressed through different enforcement efforts. And because you have a lot of high-speed roads, dangerous driving behavior was a very common mention in public outreach. A lot of people talked about how they couldn't get from one part of the city to another along a bike facility. So, they identified gaps and a desire for, for closing those gaps with, with safe facilities. And we heard a lot about how the sidewalk network had, has deficiencies in ADA facilities, curb ramps, and things like that. Next slide. And I'll go into some of the recommendations here. Next slide. Again, some of the top recommendations we made were really for bikes and pedestrians. You'll also see traffic calming recommendations, which are auto-focused, things like speed humps, neighborhood traffic calming circles, things like that. And these were all developed with city oversight and overview from Alan and Yucenia and George. I'd like to point out trails here as a special subset of recommendations. That includes Class 1 multi-use paths, like the Euclid Trail and Safe Routes to School, which is a special subset focusing on a quarter-mile around schools. We don't just focus on infrastructure, we also look at programs, like educational programs for bike riding or things like that. Next. So, like I mentioned, safer routes to school. There are 14 public schools in the city that we focused on. The emphasis here was, is pedestrian infrastructure, because that's a common denominator among all school ages. And we also, bike, bike recommendations were part of it, and traffic calming recommendations were part of it, but the emphasis is on pedestrian. Next slide. Trails. Everybody is familiar with the Pacific Electric and the Euclid Trail. Made several recommendations to expand that system, 11.3 miles in total, including opportunities that enhance the existing assets. Next. This is what we consider a connected bike network, where you can ride safely from one side of the city to another, or from your home to points of interest, to important destinations on a safe, connected bike facility. These are some of the steps that summarize our recommendations citywide. Next slide. So, that's great, we have lines on a map. What next? We have to tell you what the most important lines are, what the most important facilities are, and that's a objective process that looks at the number of important destinations along the project, the amount of community, community input, a certain area received, and that all goes into a master table and gives us a ranking of one segment over another. Next slide. These are just some of the criteria that we look at. It's a really long slide, number of schools along the project, number of parks along the projects, households without a vehicle, how many collisions are along that project, public input, things like that. Next slide. These are the priority projects. I'd like to highlight a few. I mentioned that your neighbors, Clermont and Rancho Cucamonga, have a Class IV protected bike lane along Foothill, and that ended up being your number-three priority project. Next slide. And that is my presentation, and the, I'm happy to take questions, and the recommendation for tonight is that the, the plan is received and filed.
Counsel, any questions, comments, concerns? James?
Just wanted to say thank you for all the two years of hard work you put into this. I know I attended several of the meetings. That last one that was at Carnegie was very impressive, you had over 50 people there. That was quite impressive. I do have a question, though. With 14th Street, yeah, 14th Street rehabilitation about to, I think it's in its engineering phase, and tomorrow at the Landesina Building, the community will be having a workshop to go over all of the plans. There, it shows here that class, a Class III bike lane, oh, I'm sorry, nope, take that back, a Class III bike route is penned for that area, is planned in this book for that area. Is this something that can be discussed? Will a Class III bike route be discussed tomorrow during the rehabilitation discussion? Or are these same road, two different discussions?
You can bring that up. I mean, again, this master plan is, is not set in stone. If there's certain areas that you want to kind of relook, based on any capital improvements that the city's doing, we, you certainly can do that.
Okay, cool, thank you.
If I may add, that's, Class III is a relatively low capital improvement. It, right.
Paint and signs. Just want to make sure that they include
Stripes.
While we're doing it, during the discussion.
Any other council members? All right, it's receive and file. Thank you, and it was
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, let's move on to item 13B.
That item is economic development presentation, and that will be presented by our Development Services Director, Robert Dahlquist.
Move to your, move to your right, Bob, so we can see you now, instead of hiding around the corner there.
Just give me a second, and I'll, I'll get my presentation loaded up. Okay, this is the first time that I've done this. Counsel had changed the process in terms of having Economic Development Committee, having that meeting. We're now going to a presentation twice a year on economic development activities in the city. So, I want to cover a few things, downtown revitalization, current development activity, future projects, and talk a little bit about the Route 66 Centennial. In terms of downtown revitalization, we've had two grants. One really has been the catalyst in getting a lot of businesses in downtown, and I, I show this chart every time I talk about the downtown. You can see the Business Attraction Assistance Program, where a business, retail, restaurant, entertainment can get up to $70,000. That covers mostly indoor, lots of things, such as the equipment or furnishings, working capital, that type of thing. That's been one of the major catalysts, and that's since 2017, when the first business came in was Rescue Brewery. That's brought in seven restaurants, three breweries, one local market, two food businesses, and one entertainment business. Just in the, in the past year, little over a year itself, it's brought in three restaurants, AxSlayer coming in, relocating into the downtown, and then another brewery. And so, it's been successful, it's helped us be able to turn downtown around. And these are the businesses that have come in in the past year to 18 months. King's Brewery, and they have, they had both grants, also the facade grant as well, so you can see the before and after. Studio 429, a significant change from what the building used to look like. American Fusion Cuisine and Craft Cocktails, AxSlayer, they relocated from the Packing House on Stoll, and they took over the old Feenfield Building. Patriot Dining, located in the rear of the building where J.D. Allison is at, and they just finished their improvements. They put in a new outdoor seating area with the awning. And of course, the long-awaited Two Frogs Grill in Cantina, talked to the owner, and he's planning on opening mid, mid-October. So, finally, we'll have that open. Sports Bar Restaurant has Baja Mexican cuisine. And of course, Firefly Cottage is under construction. That's going to be a 2,642-square-foot restaurant and bakery. I talked to the owner this morning, and the outside of the building, the outside shell, all of that should be done by the first quarter in 2026, and then he'll have the inside to do, because they'll have a commercial kitchen and all the furnishing, or finishings, and that should be completed later on in the year. So, hopefully, by, before the end of 2026, it'll be open.
Hey, Bob, Bob, when we talked to Felix, Felix said that that is unique, that is a very difficult building
Yeah.
For the architecture, isn't it?
Yes, he couldn't get the standard framers, he had to have craftsmen. The, the roof structure is unlike anything that's normally done, and that's taken a long time to put that together.
Yeah, I spoke to Felix, and he, because he builds houses, and he said to me, "Bill," he goes, "This is not like building a house. This is, really takes a lot to do." So, I'm happy that Felix is pursuing and moving forward with it.
Yep. As you know, you approved a lease for, for the Second Street Bagel, opening up a, a store where the Sweep Sessionist Cheesecake was. They're working on their 10 improvements right now, and they anticipate opening up by November 1st. Tom Thomas Menoya Plaza, that went out to bid a while ago, the bids came out fairly high, and so we were directed to look at the plans, make some changes, try to reduce the cost. So, we worked with Arcaterra, we've made some changes, mostly concentrated on the west, or actually, the east side of the plaza, where it's mostly park-like. We don't want to change much on the west side, which is really the urban part of that. And so, we've made some changes, and those plans have been submitted to us for our review. We plan on going out to bid in October. The new downtown parking structure, which is on Southeast Corner, First Avenue and C Street, 409 spaces, five levels, it'll have 9,009 square feet of retail space on the ground floor, which will generate about $20,000 to $25,000 in rent revenue a month, and it'll have a 5% will be EV charging stations. And there was a closer look at the elevations, has a packing house theme. This went to the planning commission at their August meeting, and they are recommending approval. And this will go to your meeting for final entitlements on October 13, '25. And I'm already in discussions with the consultant on the scope of work and cost estimate to prepare the construction plans, and those will come to you shortly after the October 13th meeting. And again, we, we received $500,000 from the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority that will fully fund the, the cost to prepare those construction plans. As you know, we have three residential projects. One is under construction right now, which I'll cover. In terms of number two, that's the packing house apartments. I reached out to the property owner several times, have not heard why. They have not done anything. I think probably interest rates and construction costs and labor costs have probably a little bit to do with that. On three and 3B, that's WPH Holdings, they have their entitlements, and they are seeking funding right now for the project. In terms of city ventures, I spoke with the Vice President of Development this morning. They've sold seven townhomes that have closed escrow, and they have seven in escrow right now. They've indicated that the market is softening. It's not this project for them, it's all their projects, but it's also the other home builders as well. One thing that she pointed out that hurt her was that Lennar is building homes on, on Foothill, near the Sycamore Inn, and they've actually lowered their prices about 100 grand, which puts them in direct competition with that project. So, that's one thing that, that hurt them. But in general, the real estate, new home sales have slowed down. And as you know, Counsel approved an ordinance to establish the downtown entertainment zone pursuant to new legislation that became effective in January. We were the first city in the Empire to adopt an ordinance, and the third city, other than the City of San Francisco, which was able to do that in the state of California, to adopt an entertainment zone. And the first entertainment zone will be the D.O. de los Minutos. That'll be on November 1st, from 12 to 10 PM, and it'll have music, vendors, food trucks, movie trucks, also kids' zone. So, it's intended for kids as well, for, for families. We had a workshop on September 3rd with the downtown businesses, as well as ABC representatives were there. We went over our regulations, and the ABC was there to answer any questions. We wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of what the requirements were, so the first event goes off as smooth as possible. We launched our, or something we're doing in economic development We launched our, something we're doing in economic development, our video series. We're going to feature one business every couple months, it'll be a 60-second to 90-second video. But to launch the program, we started off with the downtown. There are nine businesses on there. KSN did the video for us, he did a really good job, and we've launched the program. We've had, since this launched, 15 businesses that have applied that want to be featured in our video series. In terms of current development, the Mountain Green Center, they received entitlements a while back. They're carving out two out parcels on the parking field where the Arling's Furniture is. One will be a new McDonald's, and the other, they're negotiating right now with a financial institution, so that won't be a fast-service restaurant, it'll be a bank. Also, they did a significant job in upgrading all of the landscaping within the parking lot. Rose Glen Specific Plan, 64 detached homes on the east side of town on Arrow Highway, they have eight remaining to be sold, and so that's worked out really well. Vias Serena, that project was approved by the council in June 2025. KB will be the home builder, and they are preparing to get their construction plans together, so that should start construction sometime in 2026. The Packing District Self-Storage Facility, also a mixed-use project just to the east of Memorial Park. They have 3,800 square feet of commercial retail space, and also an out parcel for a drive-through service. And we have a coffee shop that is looking at that area, nothing firm yet. They're from, I believe they're from the San Diego area, they're not in town right now, and they are looking at this. I don't want to say the name, because nothing is set in stone right now, but they are looking at this site, as well as another site in town. One thing we're happy to announce is the rallies had closed on Fodell Boulevard right across from the project I just showed you. So Better Buzz Coffee, they're a small coffee chain, their headquarters in San Diego, they have 24 locations in California, Arizona. They are going to be reoccupying the rallies building and opening up a Better Buzz in the City of Upland. They'll be the first one, I believe, in the Empire, I believe. And they're known for their very extremely high-octane coffee. They have an eight-ounce coffee that's 200 milligrams of caffeine. The average is usually 80 to 100, so I think this is a strategic place, it's near the hospital, so I think a lot of the hospital workers, before they start their shift, will probably be patrons of Better Buzz.
Yeah, I don't want them working on me. So are they going to leave the monument?
Yes, that was a requirement when we talked to them, just like it was when rallies took over Taco King. It's an iconic sign on Highway 66 or Route 66, and they will also maintain that as well.
Thank you.
New Starbucks at College Park, one out parcel left, that's the only thing left in the center, and Starbucks is a ground lease, so it'll be opening up a new 2,400-square-foot Starbucks, keeping the same architectural motif as the center. In terms of future projects, these are projects that have been submitted, we just started working on, or they're projects that we know are coming in. And so the Cable Airport Event Center, it's 15,452-square-foot event center, and that'll be placed just to the east of Maniac Mike's. There'll be a museum within that event center, also observation patio on the north side of the building, so that people can watch the planes come in. And also, there'll be a wing, two-story wing for office space for rental, not just for the administration of the hospital or the airport that they're going to move over there, there'll also be opportunities for someone to rent office space in that wing.
Wing, at an airport, there you go.
Yeah, no pun intended. San Antonio Water Company, they are building their new headquarters on 20th Street, where they have a water reservoir the size 4.9 acres. It's right at the end of 20th Street where the Edison Quarter is. The environmental document has just finished public review, and that's scheduled for the October 22 Planning Commission meeting for approval. One thing that we asked for, because this is a residential street, was to provide a lemon grove buffer along 20th Street, which will eventually conceal. They did a great job on the architecture, looks like a large, you know, Spanish-style state kind of home, so I think with the landscaping improvements and the architecture of the building, it'll fit in, it's really a larger residential area. Upland Rehabilitation Center, that's located on the southwest corner of Foothill and Mountain. That's where Big Lots used to be, there's a Stater Brothers there as well. They have new ownership. The Stater Brothers building and parking lot in front is owned by a different entity. New owners bought the rest of the center. They will, first phase will be rehabilitating the Big Lots space, they'll create a new entryway, and then make improvements to the outside of the building, as well as upgrading the landscaping in the parking lot. It's mostly a parking field for the most part, and there's a possibility of either TJ Maxx or Homeco's going in there, we don't know for sure, but they do have a tenant, and they have not been able to let us announce that publicly.
We do know that there's a preference.
Yes, and that's been conveyed to them many times.
Many times more?
Yes.
Thank you.
Arrow in San Antonio, that's the vacant land, it's owned by Upland Manor, it's been part of the old Upland College Holdings. Wilmington is doing this residential project, 132 townhomes, two and three-story, about 1,100 to 1,700 square feet, craftsmen architecture. We just started processing that. There's, the site plan has a number of things that we want to have refined, and so we'll probably be processing that in the public hearing, probably sometime in 2026. Buffalo Inn Property, they submitted a specific plan, and we're going through that. There are, you know, some changes I think we'd like to incorporate. The site is the old Buffalo Inn, four and a half acres, they are proposing right now, 72 single-family, three-story detached homes, ranging from about 17 to just under 2,000 square feet. Santa Fe Tipo Rehabilitation Project, as you know, we received a third community project funding grant for $850,000 to specifically rehabilitate the historic downtown train station. We want to create a nice landscape planner right in front of the large concrete area that you see in front of where the 42nd Street Bagel will be. We're going to redo all the landscaping, there'll be some electrical wiring improvements, and, but aesthetically, you know, we want people to start using the station prior to COVID. Those numbers compared, ridership numbers compared to now are still 30% down. We want to try to make this an inviting place to be, we want to try to increase the ridership at the station. And right now, I am putting together a professional services agreement with Arcaterra, and that'll probably go to your meeting in October 27 for approval. This is the property that we currently own, the city, and we're negotiating with Azure Seafood, who wants to build a 69,800-square-foot warehouse, but also a two-story building in front, which is about 12,800 square feet, and that'll contain the seafood market, seafood restaurant, microbrewery, which will actually be on the first floor and the second floor in kind of a rooftop-type situation. There is room for a second restaurant, and then the back of the two-story building will be a 57,000-square-foot cold storage warehouse. This will be their, just kind of their distribution center for this area. Right now, we're working on the disposition and development agreement with our attorney, and that'll come back to you for approval. And lastly, I want to talk a little bit about the historic Route 66. The Centennial is next year. It was established in 1926. Right now, we're having kind of early internal discussions on having a centennial celebration, possibly at Memorial Parks, maybe around the fall. Possible events could include a large car show, bands, food trucks, other vendors. And, as you know, the Fodell Boulevard will be starting construction soon in October, and a number of improvements, including landscape median, infrastructure improvements, waterline upgrade, and that should be done before fall, so that that's all done, and the centennial celebration, that would not be an issue. The roadside that you see, we want, part of that project includes putting these up on both sides of Fodell from Mono Vista to Grove, and that's just to rebrand Foothill Boulevard as Route 66. A lot of people that haven't been here for a long time probably don't realize that Foothill Boulevard was the old Route 66, so we want to rebrand that street ahead of the centennial celebration. That's the end of my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is that it?
That's just the tip of the iceberg.
Just checking, Bob, it seems like you don't have a lot, you guys haven't done a lot, you know what I mean? Staff's been a little lazy here, haven't they?
Yeah, there's a lot of projects I didn't cover, these are like the main ones.
No, no, this is, Counsel, anything? Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you, Bob, and your staff, you guys have done a lot of work, and this is a great presentation, so really appreciate it, so thank you.
Carlos?
Hey, just a thanks to you and the staff, man, I know you're always thinking outside the box and making things a lot better all over Upland, man, so big shout out to you guys, thank you. You know, when we think back, since I've grown up here, Shannon, myself, we've been here longest, and just to see what's happened to the downtown, the revitalization, seeing, I mean, gosh, we were just, the guy who owned the Grove Theater just passed away recently. He had the Grove, he had the Granada, he had a couple of theaters, Harvey. And I remember going there as kids and having the punch cards, remember, Tuesday afternoon, it was in the summer? Get dropped off, and I would love to see the theater again someday, but that's not in our power right now. But just to, for those who have not been downtown, it's getting a really good vibe, and I talked to a lot of other cities, and they talk about our downtown, they talk about how it is down there, and we really believe that once we get some more housing in down there, we're going to totally see downtown Upland really take off with the parking structure, and it's really the vision, you know, of the council and the city staff being able to, you know, put us in the right direction so that we're not, you know, overthinking it or underthinking it, and for that I'm grateful. And I'm really looking forward to the, you know, the Route 66 100th anniversary, and don't forget, it's also the 250th anniversary of our great country next year. So next year is going to be a very important time in our history of our, not only of our country, but in Route 66. So I think that it's been going on for years, that people have wanted Route 66, it's the mother lode, right? So it's, we get to maybe see that, and when you dry Foothill Boulevard, it'll be new, it'll feel good, we won't have complaints, well, of course we will, but that's a whole nother issue. But what's really important is that, Bob, you and your team, along with, under the guidance of Michael Blay and Stephen Parker helping out with, you know, the budgets, making sure we have all this, and our Public Works Director couldn't be here, but, and all the staff, and, you know, making sure that our city moves forward in the right direction, for that I'm very grateful. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, let's move on now to Council Communications, we're going to start with Carlos.
Mayor, with all the last month's tragedies of a lot of places and things that have happened, I'd like to use my time just for one minute, just a moment of silence for all those that we've lost in the last month.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mouse?
Okay, I had the opportunity to attend Cable Airport's 80th Anniversary Celebration. What a sight to see multiple styles of airplanes and the plane that flew in D-Day Doll take off from the airport. I'm looking forward to their event center in a couple of years. Thank you to the Cable family for hosting and inviting our community, and thank you to those that attended tonight and those that are watching. If you missed our historic moment of the first key to the city presentation, you can view it tomorrow. While Ralph Cavalo's contributions were monumental, every resident has the opportunity to own your own key of giving back. What does this look like for you? Maybe a nonprofit board, joining a service club, being a neighborhood watch coordinator on your block, or volunteering to pick up trash, even a simple gesture of helping a neighbor. While I know time is precious, give your gift of time and create your own key to opening a door with purpose. Thank you.
Very good.
Follow that, wow.
Feel like some poetic?
Right, that was very nice. No, I just wanted to, I also was at the 80th anniversary of the, we didn't see each other, that's funny, of the Cable Airport. It was quite an amazing event. The camaraderie amongst everyone was really good. It was a high-energy, happy event, and getting to see the fly flag, the flying parachute carrying the flag come all the way down and like land on the spot was really awesome. So my best to the Cable family for putting that event and inviting us, thank you.
Let's try that five times real fast.
It was hard to do.
The flag flying.
They had a tagline, it was...
Very good, okay. Mayor Boettner, nothing? Not much spoke out tonight, so just thank you all for coming. Again, Ralph Cavalo, thank you, it was great to go through this and to see Ralph honored in this fashion. So just remember what he said, you know, we're here for a short time, just make a big difference, and what Ralph did was what we all strive for, to make Upland a better place to call home. City Manager?
Nothing for me tonight.
All right. With that in mind, we're going to adjourn this meeting tonight, in the honor, tonight's meeting in the memory of retired Fire Chief John Scanlon, who passed away on August 20. John began his career as a firefighter for the city in July of 1976. Through hard work and leadership, he rose through the ranks and was appointed Fire Chief in April 2001, serving in that role until his retirement in February 2005. I ask for a moment of silence to honor Chief John Scanlon. We are adjourned. So the next regularly scheduled meeting on September, excuse me, October 13.